Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Skokie Zoning Board of Appeals meeting today, October 16th, 2019. The zoning board of appeals is created by the statutes of the state of Illinois and by the ordinances of the village of Skokie for the purpose of granting proper case relief from the strict terms of our zoning ordinances. The decision of this board to either grant or deny relief will be based upon the evidence presented to it and how that evidence is related to the standards for granting relief. All persons who have an interest in a case, either as a petitioner or a member of the public, either supporting or opposing the petition, or as an independent witness, will be given a chance to speak on the record and to express his or her points of view. The zoning board of appeals is not a court of law, and therefore, we do not follow the strict rules of evidence. However, this hearing will be conducted in such a manner as to hear only competent evidence or statements. Questions as to procedure, interpretation, and the immiscibility of statements or evidence will be ruled upon by Corporation Consul Tyler Kobelski, and his legal decisions will be binding upon this board. Certain cases require a covenant running with the land. This will be prepared and recorded by the Village of Skokie Legal Department, and this is done at the petitioner's expense. Whether or not a covenant is required is a determination to be made by the Corporation Consul at the conclusion of each individual case. If a covenant running with the land is required, it cannot or will not be prepared until our court reporter has returned to the Zoning Board of Appeals a transcript of these proceedings. The Village of Skokie will notify each petitioner when the covenant has been prepared and is ready for signature. No building permits or certificates of occupancy can be issued until the covenant is signed by the petitioner. Should a petition for variation be denied, or should a covenant not be required, the Board of Trustees will authorize a refund of any required fees. Should it be necessary for the petitioner to request a continuance due to lack of preparation, a case continuation fee of one-half of the original application fee is due prior to the rehearing date. This request must be made before any testimony begins. All petitioners must receive a vote of the majority of the zoning board present in order to decide any matter under consideration. Our full complement is nine members, and today we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and seven. Today we have seven, which requires a majority vote of four for a petition to be approved. Tonight, we have two cases, 2019-10Z and 2019-9Z. We'll be discussing case 2019-10Z first. But the first thing we're going to do is ask for a motion to approve the meetings, the minutes of the previous meeting, which was held on September 18th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll have a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Okay, the minutes of the previous meeting are approved. Now, I'd like everybody who think they might be testifying in this case to stand. We're going to swear you in as a group. So, everybody who might be testifying, please stand, raise your right hand. And, do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge or belief? Okay, does anybody respond in the negative? Okay, we're all sworn in. The first case again we're going to hear is 2019-10Z. And David, why don't you start by reading that case, and then I'm going to make a few comments before we proceed.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. 2019-10Z, 3411 to 3419 Dempster Street. David Family Properties LLC on behalf of Encore Events LLC request a variation in order to operate a banquet facility at 3415 Dempster Street, resulting in a parking deficit of seven parking spaces, the amount by which the requirements for the new use exceed the previous use as required by Sections 118-201 (3) and 118-218 (4) of the Skokie Village Code in a B2 commercial district. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to read more? This is the initial... Isn't that what you wanted me to do, just read this?
Right, and then we're going to... Why don't you read the reports into the record?
Oh, okay.
And if you have any question, David, you can just call Tyler or me over.
Well, do you want me to read the...
Let's read the petitioner's statement.
Okay, fine.
And then the reports.
Fine. Encore Events will be used as a rental space for a client's personal use such as birthday parties, baby showers, business meetings, yoga classes, pop-up shops, et cetera. This open space will be able to accommodate fifty people seated and a hundred standing. These events will be more personable and social events. Encore Events will run more events on weekends while anticipating being available Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to midnight. Having flexibility to work with our clients at varying daytimes will be very beneficial to the client. We expect to host smaller events during the week such as our classes, makeup classes, exercising, et cetera, while also drawing more clients to the area, which helps all businesses around and likewise. Encore Events is a spinoff of previous businesses, Encore Custom Events and Designs, ECED, and Encore Events have the same owner's designs team, Sasha Smith and Ebony Redmond. The other part that follows is more of a history of the organization, so I'm... You can refer to that in the report. I will put down the conclusion, though, of that paragraph. "We are prepared to embark on this extended venture and make the best of all possible things in a community that we are well-known and respect." And then it goes on to the history of the company and the people involved in it, et cetera. It ends with this. "Encore Events will be unique in this area. There are no other small, affordable venues to rent like us that offer full-service decorating style. We are also unique because there's parking attached to the location, which is really crucial to our prospective clients. We intend to rent the space out at an hourly rate while also having a promotional daily rate for all-day events. If clients want to hire us for decorative services, there is a custom price based on the decor ideas. Should clients want catering options, we would partner with DAGRK Pit and other local eateries for catering services. The space will be enhanced with flooring, painting, new bathroom, lighting, beautiful furnishings. We intend to open our doors to the public during the fall's 2019 season." Now, I'm going to read into the record the staff reports. Traffic Engineering Division. "The Traffic Engineering Division does not support the petitioner's request for a variation. The proposed use requires an additional seven more parking spaces for the subject site. Knowing that these submitted floor plans show fifty seats or a hundred standing customers, Traffic Engineering cannot support the request due to increase in vehicular..." Vehicular, I'm okay. Vehicular traffic. "Even though this application states most event will occur on weekends, other businesses on-site and in the area are also open on weekends depending on the public parking lot east of the subject site." Fire Department. "The Skokie Fire Prevention Bureau has determined this occupancy as an A2 assembly as defined in the 2012 International Building Code, IBC, Chapter 10, Section 1004, The tables and chairs are not concentrated, and therefore, maximum occupancy load is calculated as square footage slash fifteen. In this case, the maximum square footage allows for maximum occupancy load of the front banquet room for no greater than forty-four persons. The proposed seating capacity was listed at fifty and a hundred standing, and therefore contradicts the maximum allowed by the aforementioned IBC reference. As presented, the Fire Department would deny the petitioner's request if there are more than forty-four persons in front banquet room." There's an Environmental Health Division, and the petitioners can refer to that in the report. Community Development Department. "The Community Development does not support the petitioner's request to operate a banquet facility at 3415 Dempster Street. Staff has concerns about the potential number of people occupying the facility at one time, upwards of fifty to a hundred, and the number of vehicles that will be parked in the area. Even if the banquet facility only operates on weekends, other businesses in the area are also open during the... on weekends, potentially creating parking issues for the neighborhood. Most non-medical offices and retail stores can occupy this location without a parking variation. Staff feels the petitioner's proposal is too intense for this location."
Thank you very much, David. And before we have the petitioners come to the podium, in light of the reports that we've received from the different agencies, and I'd like some feedback from the commissioners here as well. One idea that I think we have is for you to work with the Building Department over approximately the next month, and maybe come up with a more detailed plan that would fall certainly within the forty-four, but I think we might want to have some discussion as a board to give some guidance to the petitioners, a number that we might be comfortable with as a maximum. Now, you might say that you want the case heard with the numbers, and that's fine, you have a legal right to that. But I'm offering this as an option, and speaking to Corporation Consul, if we make the motion to continue this case as a board, then it wouldn't be due to lack of preparation, so you wouldn't have the continuation fee that we talked about at the beginning. And Corporation Consul Kobelski, I'll ask you to comment on that.
I agree.
So, it's an opportunity to work over the next month with the Building Department and maybe come up with a plan that might get some better buy-in from Traffic and Community Development, and the... I don't think it was Engineering, but Traffic, Community Development, and the Fire Prevention Department. So, any thoughts on this board? And, well, I guess for petitioners, you know, come to the podium, because this is where the microphone is, and this is a recorded session, and maybe give us your feelings about proceeding in this manner.
I'll also say for the record that notice was proper and correct in this case?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was notice proper and correct?
It was.
Hello, my name is Ebony Redmond, and this is my business partner Sasha Smith. We are the petitioners for the property for Encore Events that we are looking to open at 3415 Dempster Street. I am noticing that it is... The biggest part about it is that it's being known to be a banquet facility, and I don't really want to say that it is necessarily a banquet facility, because that just seems a little bit more broader to me. Our numbers on how we came up with the fifty seated and a hundred standing was based off of our first interaction with the Fire Department Chief. He had visited us at the site, and based off of the dimensions of the space, he told us that about fifty people seated, a hundred people standing would be fine based off of, you know, the area of the space. It is something that we can work with, for sure, to be able to limit it a little bit, or to demise it a little bit to make it fit with the forty-four spaces. My one question is, are we talking about forty-four people seated?
Well, I think, and I don't want to speak too much for the rest of the board, I'd like to have some discussion, but the main consideration is the parking.
Right.
And that lot at times can be with a few cars in it, or it can be seventy percent capacity, because I've come by and visited a few times. So, if there's forty-four people there and there's some employees, then the question is, you know, how many cars are there? So, I think what I'd like to have from the board is some discussion of a number that we might be comfortable with. Then you would go back to the drawing board with the Building Department and have sort of a more specific plan where tables might be, things like that, so that when you come back, we either end up with something we will agree with or not, you know, as opposed to voting on this as it's presented in light of the agency reports.
Yeah, based on the size of the room, the main room, it's a... Fire Department can't allow occupancy over forty-four.
Okay, and so that's seated or standing?
Well, because of the seat, it's the seated.
Right, okay.
So, based on the floor plan with the tables and chairs and the setup and the size of the square footage of that room, fire wouldn't... Fire can't allow over occupancy of forty-four.
That's fine, just like we said, that was based on what the Fire Department said when they first came out.
Yeah, the recommendation.
He actually said it could hold seventy people seating and a hundred people standing, and we were like...
We were looking at the table dimensions, and we knew that that really wasn't possible without being really tight on space. We've been doing this actually for about six years, and we've been working with other venues. So, we've always been like a traveling event decor service type company, and we're looking to be a little bit more where we have our own venue space, and we can provide an actual space to our clients and provide decor to our clients. Most of the events that we have done in our time period that we've been in action has been about fifty people to a hundred people. And then if it has been something over, it's been more so because it was like something of a wedding ceremony or something, which wouldn't definitely be something that we would try to hold in this type of space. We would still, you know, outsource those type of venue spaces for our clients. But definitely, it is a concern, because anywhere you go, you want to make sure that there is parking available. So, we just wanted to really know, like, with the parking lot that is adjacent to the space, you know, how many spaces we can say would be able to be used by our potential, you know, clients to be able to...
Right, and that's why I think maybe to have some discussion here as to a number that we might be... And I know I really haven't thought about it that much.
Yeah, even with that forty-four, you know, I just want to get kind of an idea of what it is that we can work with, just to make sure it's feasible, because that is a big part of what, you know... A lot of people, you know, because you go downtown, you want to make sure you have space. So, I'm pretty sure it's the same in a local area.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would... I think they're better off going back to the village and work with the village first. In a lot of the cases we had like this, we have a continuance, and I think the best place is actually going back and rethinking this and talking to the village, because they're very good, to give you some really good ideas. I don't know what we can really...
Well, I think that... And I agree with that. I think there's... It makes sense. And again, this would be a continuation at the board's motion to continue. So, it wouldn't be for lack of preparation, so you wouldn't have that extra fee that we talked about. And, but David, I think the challenge here is... And Brian, maybe you can comment on this too, but the challenge here is in working with Brian. He's not necessarily going to speak for the whole board when we reconvene, so I sort of want to be as prepared as we can when you sit down with Brian.
Yeah, because I want to know what I'm looking at to know.
You know, what we absolutely won't agree to and what we absolutely would agree to, but it may be a better sense.
Because we've spent a lot of time on this. I want to say we've been working on this since March. Yeah, so, you know, we want to move forward with it and figure out... And if we would have known these pieces in advance, like, we could have been a little bit more prepared. But, you know, I feel like we've been probably given a little bit wrong direction on...
Right, well, and then another reason for having this, you know, the motion of the board to do this. And I think, Brian, the next meeting is November...
We would need revised floor plans with a kind of revised basic operating procedure, a little bit better floor plans with some dimensions of the tables, spacing between tables with chairs, stuff like that. Staff would probably... The November...
Yeah, I think not necessarily the next meeting, but maybe the one after, so we're not squished for time.
November 20.
Yeah, the November 20th meeting.
Would you be able to attend that?
Yes.
Yeah, because that way, you'd have to submit some revised floor plans. Staff would then re-comment on it and revise the staff report. But we could possibly also set up a, you know, a meeting with staff maybe sometime next week. And then that way, we'd have time to then get a revised plan in for us to review and then, you know, reroute out to different departments.
If we can move, yes, if we could plan for a meeting sometime in the very next week, that would definitely help, so it'd prepare us for November 20.
So, and one other thing, since, you know, originally the idea was to continue it, the question is, is what you're giving now testimony? So, just in case it is, if you could spell your name, state your name, and spell your name for the record, both of you.
My name is Ebony Redmond, S.E.B.O.N.Y., last name Redmond, R.E.D.M.O.N.D.
And I'm Sasha Smith, S.A.S.H.A., Smith, S.M.I.T.H.
Thank you, yes.
I just wanted to know, obviously, there's a big difference between forty-four and a hundred, which was your original plan. Are you going to be able to find a different venue for those larger events?
Well, that would be something we would outsource, for sure, just like we've been doing. Yeah, we would outsource it. We, to be honest with you, we're more so like in the... Like, we do weddings, but a lot of the things that we do are children's parties, which are usually typically under fifty people. So, we are able to really accommodate that. Like, children's parties, baby showers, that's our really biggest niche that we get from our customers, that they want us to be able to provide. But also, we want to have the space during the weekdays that we can have it available for people to have corporate meetings or luncheons, where people can rent it out for yoga classes. And, you know, that's really small. That's probably like twenty people to set up a long table and maybe set it out, you know. So, that's something that isn't as big. But like you say, for something that is a hundred people rounded out like that, then that would be something that we would still outsource.
And a hundred people would leave with no tables, because that's what the Fire Department...
Right, and that number was given based off of us talking to the Fire Department.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because of the parking, not because of whatever the space holds.
Right, yeah, for sure.
So, David? I just have a question about the time. You said sometimes you're there at twelve o'clock at night. Does that affect, Brian, any of the problems with parking if it's at twelve o'clock at night?
The zoning board can put restrictions on if they see fits for the variation. It's usually a little bit unusual. Not a hundred percent unusual, but there are some... There have been some restrictions for certain types of uses, I think, through the Plan Commission and Village Board. They have put some restrictions on if that is a concern.
Parking would be less of a concern than noise, for example.
You're correct. There's... I know there's some uses that are open that we get noise complaints on from residents that go to the police, you know, they come to us after the fact. They refer to the police department as more of a nuisance, under nuisance ordinance, that it's, you know, at certain time that, you know, that it's affecting people trying to sleep.
So, does anybody have any thoughts that they might want to offer? We know forty-four is the most from the fire rules, but from a parking perspective, does anybody have any thoughts that they want to offer right now? So, we can, you know, maybe give our petitioners a little bit of guidance in terms of when they speak with Brian.
I just have a question about this picture that's included here. Was this on a weekend or a weekday, this picture that's in the map?
That's an aerial photograph from the Planning Department. I could not give you a date on that. I can from... I can give you a photograph from near map, which is aerial photographs from Tuesday, July 10th, which shows the parking lot.
It just looks like... I mean, I live in the area, and I know that it's like really busy on the weekends over there. So, I just... I'm just wondering, like, if you're having events on the weekends, and these other businesses are also open, and you're relying on using their lot, like, how much realistic space are you going to have there? And are you going to be overflowing down the residential streets?
Well, I've actually visited the area on the weekends, and it's pretty empty. All the businesses that are in the area, if we were to do an event that ran till, per se, till midnight, they're not open. The only facilities I know that are open in the area is like the Kush Lounge and maybe...
They don't open till like eight, nine.
Right, and they don't even use that lot. So, I've drove and passed and seen maybe like three cars in the lot, and that was what really like appealed to me, to see that, you know.
I went to today, and it was about seventy percent, I'd say, full at around noon.
Yeah, the Ken's down, like, other businesses overflow into there. I'm just wondering if there's like a way to have like an agreement of some sort, like...
So, a lot of the, like...
To today?
A lot of our events that we've done have been like evening, like, from like two to maybe nine, or two to eight. That's the latest we've done an event. So, we just wanted to have the timeframe open to be unique to the neighborhood, because, for example, like, the cities, they... Like, the city properties, they're... They end at eleven. They... Their events end at eleven, so we figured if we can...
Talking about like park district parking.
Right, yeah.
So, and, like I said, they end at eleven, so...
We wanted to do something that can... That could be a little bit more flexible for people to be able to...
I doubt we'll have many after midnight, like...
I think only weddings go that long, and we're really not trying to...
Yeah, I've never been to a baby shower that goes that late.
Yeah, right.
Interesting.
Quick question for Brian, though. If they were to limit occupancy at forty-four, would that change the parking deficit at all?
No, the parking's based on the square footage of the... The parking requirement's based on the square footage of the space. Again, there could be restrictions and put in by the zoning board for occupancy hours, stuff like that. But staff looks at it as to... Because they can propose to move a wall, they could propose to move the wall that's inside there and make that front space bigger, and now the occupancy increases for the front space.
And he said that would be seventy-two if we took the wall down.
Right, so, either way, it's parked at...
A lot of cars.
It's parked at one per one hundred regardless. It is an increase from the previous use, and so variations required. So, now it's looking at the specifics of the type of use.
And also the idea of the sink and everything else, so I mean, you have to have a place to put those things.
Yeah, there... Yeah, that's... And again, this is the floor plan the petitioner's proposed. I don't know if they're thinking of increasing, decreasing it, keeping it the same. That's maybe discussion, you know, with staff a little bit to see. But for our purposes, if, you know, the zoning board, you know, could put restrictions on occupancy numbers and hours of operations if they feel it's appropriate.
It's complicated, because talking about the number, but also the time.
How late is Kush open? Do you know off the top of your head?
Three in the morning.
Yeah, they're open super late, and they're like right next door. So, I don't see why it would be a big deal to put zoning restrictions on at midnight. Like, Kush doesn't open till like...
I mean, it's not like we're outside playing, and it's not like our...
We're not going to have like a stereo system where it's going to be a nuisance or anything like that.
It would more just be people coming and going.
It's not going to be a club. This is a small social, you can have, like, small gatherings. It's not like a club that's going to be open. That's why we were... We kind of got discouraged by it being called a banquet hall, because when I think of banquet hall, I think of big liquor.
Liquor and all that type of stuff, we're not including, yeah, DJs and all that.
Well, I think the key is whether that characterization is correct, and it sounds like it isn't, is how many cars are coming in.
Yeah, it's not a restaurant. They don't cook and prepare food on-site. It's not an office. It definitely is an assembly use. That's the best use category that it would fall under, is that there's going to be people on-site for some type of event or function, whether there's food served or not. That's the closest you staff could lump what was proposed in the write-up to. Again, it's clearly not a full-service restaurant or limited-service restaurant, something like that. They're not preparing... It is an assembly use, which the banquet facility staff felt was the closest category.
But it's also, it's a car issue, no matter what we call it.
Yeah, it's an assembly-type use, for sure.
One more question. Would you say your... Most of your business is Friday night and Saturday night, or Friday night and Saturday day?
Or Sunday. Sundays are really important days for events with people, for sure.
You know, I think, as I said in the beginning, you need to refine this. We want your... We want new businesses in Skokie, you really welcome to here. But if you just refine this a little bit, worker of the village, then a lot of these objections may, you know, may not even be here if we refine the business and you think more about exactly what you're... If we refine the business and you think more about exactly what you're going to have and how many people and so on, because it really is a parking issue, isn't it?
Well, that's exactly what it is.
I do want to say, typically, I don't know if this will help, but any, like, a baby shower normally lasts about three to four hours, give or take, a kid's party.
Yeah, most events are three to four hours, period, most events that we, that we would do, you know? Anything longer than that would be considered a wedding, and like we said, that wouldn't be something we would hold at this specific space.
So, let me ask Brian, if you think you're able to answer this. Do you think this is, would benefit from further discussion now to give, uh, everybody some guidance when you're talking over the upcoming four weeks? Or you think it would make sense to just start the discussions?
It's probably, I mean, it would probably be better if, I think, I mean, the, I, I think staff knows what the intent is.
Right.
As staff knows, I think staff feels they know what the intent is there, based on the number, fifty to a hundred numbers, we felt it was not suit, you know, not suited for the site. You know, fire, based on if the room size is going to stay the same, forty-four is going to be maximum occupancy per fire, that's going to be a definite.
So, let's, let's talk about this, and Sharon brought up an interesting point, uh, you know, she had asked you the question about, you know, what days might bring the most people in, so one of the things that we may be able to do is to, you know, limit it more on days when we think there's going to be more stress on the parking and less on days when there might be less stress. So, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, just, living in the area, what you were saying, like, there's more parking available on Fridays and Saturdays in that space. Right, because the diners closed, so, I mean, yeah, it's, I think it's something that you're going to want to sit down and work with staff on and talk about, and, um, reach some conclusions on, on maybe if you're coming to an agreement with anybody, if you need, if you're moving any walls, like, what exactly you're going to do.
Right, and that, and that's definitely something that we've been considering too, because we want to have more space.
Right, but even if you move walls, it's still,
Right, there's still parking deficit, but then their plan would be more finalized and they would know exactly what's going on, and I guess as to the time thing, that's less of a concern to me, because there is a neighboring business that is open extremely late, it's like really close to Dempster there, it's not, like, you're not going to come out and then cruise down Trumbull to get to Maine, you're going to come out and go down Dempster, most likely, so it's, the time thing isn't really a huge deal, and you'd want to keep it open, because what if they decide to do art gallery space and hold an art gallery show or something like that, like, just keep, I wouldn't want to restrict the purpose of their business too much, since it's so open-ended.
Maybe if, if anybody wants to speak up informally, I know this isn't the usual process, but I want to give as much guidance to Brian and to you as the petitioners as, as we can. How do people feel about forty or forty-four people as a maximum? Any thoughts about that?
Forty-four, forty should be a maximum.
Anybody else want to?
Forty-four should be okay.
Yeah. Anybody feel strongly against forty to forty-four at this point?
Well, what if they came up with an agreement with CVS across the street where in the evenings they could use CVS's lot, because CVS closes at nine or something like that? Like, they're, they have to sit down, or Herms, Herms closes pretty early.
I'm very close with the owner, owner of Herms, I actually own a restaurant in Evanston, The Jerk Pit, which is the restaurant I was talking about for catering. So, it's kind of an all-inclusive business that I'm trying to inquire here, um, and so that is something that I was open to talking to the owner of Herms.
And certainly there's precedent for us, you know, uh, counting that or considering that when granting an exemption.
Right, if we could, if you could get letters or something, or sit down with Brian and come up with a solution about what businesses to approach about, this is our overflow lot, and here's how we get people from here to there, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways that they could consider it.
Right.
It certainly sounds like a really valuable addition to that area, which has been pretty empty.
Exactly, so, um, but I just, I wanted to give some type of marching order, so, you know, we're not doing this blind, you know, when we show up next month with something that none of us like.
Right.
Yeah, staff needs a better floor plan, better table layout with some dimensions on tables, seats, stuff like that, clearances, fire was a little interested, so a little bit more of a scaled dimension floor plan showing, you know, if you're thinking of forty or something like that, forty, forty-four, whatever the number, this is, you know, how the tables would, you know, we estimate being laid out, um, these are clearances, stuff like that. Maybe you should talk to a couple other neighboring businesses to see if, you know, things are busy Sunday afternoon, Friday night, whatever it might be. You know, it, you know, can we park a few cars, several cars, if, you know, can we get the okay? I would start doing that, and then early next week, you could follow up with me about setting up a meeting for later in the week.
Okay.
And those aren't legal spaces, we can count for the deficit, but certainly there's a precedent on the board for, uh, you know, taking that into consideration when granting an exemption.
Or even if you're on the upper end of thirty to forty, like, you have a requirement to have valet parking and offer that service or something like that, to keep people off from crossing Dempster, if you, you do something like that, just, you know, sit down and really, I think, be creative with staff and with your neighbors and see what you can come up with.
Okay, and, um, I'm going to ask Tyler this, since it sounds a little bit like, like, uh, testimony. Uh, would it be appropriate if there's anybody else that wants to speak on this who wouldn't be available for the next meeting, the next meeting, as we said, November twentieth?
November twentieth will be the next meeting.
Okay, so, uh, I'll ask if there's anybody else that wants to offer testimony on this that won't be there, uh, November twentieth. And you can certainly show up November twentieth, too.
May I ask, is that a Wednesday?
Yes, the zoning board always meets Wednesday night, seven thirty.
Uh, certainly, so step to the podium and state your name and spell it for the record.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Michael Bambooyani, I actually live right around the corner for what you're,
And if you could spell your name, Michael, for the record, your last name. Thank you.
Um, I live right around the corner from where they're planning to put the, the event services or whatever it be so. My only concern with the whole situation is, is yes, number one, the parking.
Right.
On Trumbull there, we're right around the corner from that parking lot, and I'll tell you, after about four or five o'clock, when everybody gets home from work, it's difficult enough for the residents to park on the residential streets there in that area. I know that parking lot is used a lot in the winter time for the, for the snow cleaning for the streets, where we have to do the moving of the vehicles for certain days, when there's over two inches of snow, which that parking lot becomes utilized in that situation, and it could create a little bit of a hardship for some of the elderly neighbors that are in that street in that neighborhood there. So, not opposed to using the parking lot there, but it could create some difficulties if there was an additional twenty-four cars, if we had forty-four people there, you know, twenty-two extra vehicles, if they're coming in pairs for the residents of the neighborhood. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, and, uh, it looks like we're going to be rehearing this on the twentieth, is that the next meeting? So, please feel free to come, and, uh, you know, you'll be able to hear what's, whatever's being re-proposed, and, uh, testify.
Absolutely, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Michael. Well, please, step to the podium, uh, state your name for the record, and also spell your name.
Anna Horowitz, H.O.R.W.I.T.Z. Um, I live around the corner from the establishment that they want to open up, I'm a neighbor of Michael, or Mike. My biggest concern is the parking, we, that eighty-seven hundred block of Trumbull has many, um, two flats, it's not just homes, single homes. So, when you have two flats, you have more cars, and it's just a big problem as it is without a business around the corner. So, we're concerned, people will be coming home from work at supper time, there'll be no parking, if they're having, uh, an event at that time. So, that's my biggest concern, is, is the parking issue.
Can I ask a question, um, maybe when staff sits down with them and could look at, the traffic engineering department looks at it again, what if they made the area permit?
Oh, um,
Because it is always crowded over there.
Right, right, right.
And it's a lot of multifamily housing.
Residents, you're talking about for the residents?
Right, if it's permitted for residents, like it is downtown here, you know how you can't park anywhere on the back streets?
They, I believe they'd need so many of the residents to sign it, and then there's, it's minimal fees for the resident parking plus guest parking, but so many residents on the block would have to be in favor of it.
So, it'd have to be like a petition process that they get together and do?
Correct.
So, if it's like an ongoing problem, maybe you and your neighbors want to consider something like that.
Right, but I think we want to prevent that from happening, so we don't have to go through that, that's the whole point. I mean, you have a public parking lot right next door, which is great, but people park there for, I don't even think they're associated with any of the businesses there, but you see cars there all the time.
Oh, right, I just heard both of you testify, though, that it's a problem already, and so I was, I mean, if, if, if any place takes over that business, they're going to utilize the parking in the area.
Right.
So, if it's already a problem for residents to park there, right, you might want to consider some other solutions.
When you're talking about a party with forty-four people, that's a lot of cars.
Oh, right, that's why we suggested maybe they consider contracting with other public lots there.
Right, right, and I think that's not a bad idea, actually, okay, so that's all I want to say.
I have a question, what was there before, before that, before it was vacant?
Was that Sabina Studios?
It was an art gallery.
Yeah, Sabina Studios.
And how many cars you think they had there, out of curiosity? How many cars had parked?
Our daughter used to go there to paint when she was little, and now she's thirty-one, it was there forever.
I mean, how many cars you think were, were, did they use, because this is all about cars.
Well, they have only four parking in the front, and so they had to use the public parking.
Well, it was also a lot of drop-off and pickup, too, so, I mean, people might have parked, but just for a short time.
Yeah, I, I, I couldn't estimate on the previous user, the previous tenant and their parking, I, I couldn't estimate who was, for what that tenant in the public parking, who was using it.
You know, that brings up an interesting question, I'm glad we did talk, if you're going to have parties with children, they're not going to have a lot of cars there. The parents will drop them off and go away and pick them up.
Yeah, I have an example, yeah, because, um, we've done a lot of events at Gibbs Morrison in Evanston, um, and they have a private parking lot that belongs to the city of Evanston, right adjacent, across the street, and it actually is a parking lot. I think it belongs to the city of Evanston, or it belongs to the high school, um, and it's about seventy spots in that parking lot as well, and we've done many children's parties. When we do children's parties, that's always been our go-to, um, and I can say I've probably seen maybe about ten spots taken, you know, because like you say, a lot of parents do drop their stu, their, their kids off, um, and hand them over to whoever is the supervisor of the party, whoever's giving the party. Yeah, we've done, yeah, it has never been like an overcrowd or,
Stuff like that.
Yeah, as, as a,
It's like family.
As a, as a parent with a young child, we go to our parties with our son, if they're older, it's different. If you have younger children, they're not being dropped off.
Right, three-year-olds aren't being dropped off, eight-year-olds probably, yeah. So, is there anything more, anybody on the board?
I will, um, be in contact with the owner of Herms and see, you know, if there's something that we can work out regarding the parking, just to fill in that deficit when there is an event that we're having that might take up a lot of spots as well. That is something that, um, I'm definitely open to, and I've already thought on that, you know, prior to this meeting.
Yeah, so they could, so they could look, start looking into other parking for overflow with other tenants in the area. We need a better floor plan, so that can be worked on sooner than later, and then next Monday, contact me about a meeting later in the week, or worst case, the beginning of the next week.
Right.
Is there anybody else that would like to testify who's here today, and again, you're welcome to come and testify on the twentieth? Okay, are there any additional questions for, um, from the board members, or comments, or thoughts? Okay, so what I'd like to do is make a motion.
I do want to say one more thing, I'm sorry. I don't want anyone to feel like this is like something negative, like, okay, the parking may be an issue, but this is, there's hard to find, hard to find places to do, like, sm, social events, besides using city, you know, city, um,
Property, which, park district.
We plan to make ours cute and fun and look nice to rent, so that's why we were like, okay, we do decor already, why not have our own space to produce that other aspect of it? So, it's a good thing.
Yeah, the land use is permitted, it's because it has a higher parking requirement, so, that's, that's why there's the variation, there's an option for the variation. But the questions are, I think, focusing on number of people, how many, how many, number of people coming, number of cars, and then hours and days that it might be busier, that we don't want this to negatively impact the neighborhood. The land use is permitted, if you can find, if you were to take over a space that was already parked at one per one hundred, um, in, in a business district and it's a permitted use, you'd be able to move right in.
Right.
So, if you were to take over a restaurant that was already parked at one per one hundred, you'd be able to move right in. That's why you see a lot of times, um, the, just for one example, the, um, old Peta Insight, that's the, Pete, what's the, what's the name? Yeah, Zad, they, they took over an existing restaurant, same size, um, they were able to move right in. If there was a previous restaurant, they took over, so, the use is permitted, there's no question, it's just the number of people in the parking that it's going to create.
That's what happened with me with the restaurant as well, it was previously a restaurant, so I didn't have to, you know, this is new to me as far as,
Well, just, I mean, just to think about it creatively, if you go to Stefani Prime, like, their lot is super small, and their planning commission really wanted them to come there, so they got creative, and they said, fine, you can operate, but it's valet only.
Right.
So, you, I mean, they can cram a hundred cars in there, but it's valet only, right? So, I mean, even if you wrote it into your plan, maybe that like you would offer valet services and use Herms as an overflow, that way you only have the two guys crossing Dempster, you know, that, just,
Instead of having, yeah, for sure.
Think about it that way, just to be considerate to the whole neighborhood.
That's a good idea, actually.
Motion. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to continue this case until the next meeting on November twentieth, Wednesday, two thousand and nineteen. Do I have a second?
I seconded.
Okay, so I'll read the roll, so let's see, we're going to have a motion, and...
If it's by agreement, do we need a roll vote?
Just continue, Nick.
Tyler, what do you think? We can just go by ayes and see if there's any nays, give a voice vote.
So, uh, by voice vote, everybody in favor say yes or aye?
Yes.
Uh, anybody opposed? Okay, so this case is continued until November twentieth, Wednesday, two thousand and nineteen.
And just to be clear, there's going to be no additional notice going to any residents in the area, so you're not required to provide any more notice than was provided tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, we are going to now continue with our next case, two thousand and nineteen, uh, dash nine C, and Commissioner Kirkpatrick, I think this is your case. So, why don't you start with a description, and then we'll have the petitioners come to the podium.
I'll just state for the record that notice was proper and correct in this case as well.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
David Family, this is case two thousand and nineteen nine Z, thirty-four eleven to thirty-four nineteen Dempster Street. David Family Properties LLC, on behalf of Frank Ryu of Green Day Spa, request a variation in order to operate a barber shop, beauty parlor, or other similar personal service shop at thirty-four nineteen Dempster Street, resulting in a parking dump, deficit of two parking spaces, the amount by which the requirements for the new use exceed the previous use is required by sections one eighteen two oh one three and one eighteen two eighteen four of the Skokie Village Code in the B two commercial district. There is a letter from Karen David, the owner, dear Mr. Augustine, this letter is to inform you that the owners of the property hereby authorize our tenant, Green Day Spa, to apply for a parking variance for their location at thirty-four nineteen Dempster Street, Skokie, Illinois. And that's signed by Karen David, owner. The petitioner's statement, I am wanting to move into the space known as thirty-four nineteen Dempster, Skokie, Illinois. This is an older building, and the variation I am requesting is for the deficit from the old use to the new use. There's a limitation on use of the above property due to physical features, without the request, Without the requested variance, there can be no reasonable use of the property. This request is not based solely on economic reasons and the property owner did not create the necessity for the variance. This request is the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use. Further, this request will not be injurious to public health, safety, or welfare. The subject site possesses one or more unique characteristics generally not applicable to similarly situated properties. And then I believe there's one final statement from the tenant. This is to advise you that I, Frank Yu, owner of the Green Day Spa, expect to be actively involved in the operation of the business, including working in the hot stone and waxing
Okay. Would the petitioner come to the podium, state your name and spell it for the record, and please present your case?
Good evening. My name is Peter Lee, L-E-E. I am here on behalf of Frank Yu, who is a petitioner. He's sitting outside the... He has a little headache. But anyway, I represent the petitioner in regard to this variation.
Okay. And aside from what was read into the record, is there anything else that you would like to say?
Not really. I mean, it's a variation for two spaces for parking deficit.
And Commissioner Kirkpatrick or anyone else, do you have any thoughts or comments? Commissioner Kirkpatrick, you go first.
Well, I think we've analyzed the space quite thoroughly, and I think two parking spaces can easily be accommodated in the public parking lot.
Right, right. I think so, too. What I'd like to get for the record, though, is...
The staff recommendation.
Well, not to... But I want to get in the record some idea of how many employees are going to be there at any one time, how many customers, those kinds of things. Would you be familiar with that?
Yes, typically when there'll be one or two employees and more likely one or two customers at a time, so it's very unlikely.
No more than five people.
No more than five people, yes.
This will be by appointment only?
Most likely, yes. There may be some walk-ins, but usually it's the repeat customers, yes.
Does anybody have any other questions or thoughts? Commissioner Kirkpatrick, would you like to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to testify on this case?
Mr. Chairman, I propose the following and the granting of a variance to the petitioner as follows. The David Family LLC is the owner of the lot describing case number two thousand and nineteen-nine-Z for the property located at thirty-four-eleven to thirty-four-nineteen Dempster, Skokie, Cook County, Illinois. That said lot is a plotted lot of record and is buttered by commercial buildings on the east and west. That a determination has been made in which the petitioner's request is consistent with the majority of the findings of fact as stated in the Village of Skokie zoning chapter. I therefore propose that a variance be granted to the petitioner for giving failure to comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance of the Village of Skokie as amended as to off-street loading and parking requirements. That the petitioner be granted the variance to operate a barber shop, beauty shop, or other similar personal service resulting in a parking deficit of two parking spaces. The amount by which the requirements for the new use exceed the previous use is required by sections one eighteen-two-oh-one-three and one eighteen-two-eighteen-four of the Skokie Village Code and the B-two Commercial District. That the variation be good only for Green Day Spa and is not transferable to another land use. That all other codes and ordinances of the Village of Skokie shall be fully and strictly complied with.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay. And I'm going to read the roll. We'll start with Commissioner Beverley.
Aye.
Okay. And Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Aye.
And Commissioner Arden?
Yes.
Commissioner Solovy?
Aye.
And the chairman is going to vote yes as well. So this is passing by seven votes, the proper majority. And Corporation Council, will there be a covenant running with the land required?
There will be a covenant. It'll take us probably two weeks to get it ready, and then when it is ready, we'll contact you for the property owner's signature.
Thank you very much.
Richard, I knew there wasn't all family a year ago, so people coming to protest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we're done hearing all our cases and testimony today. The next meeting scheduled, Brian, I understand, is November twentieth, Wednesday, two thousand and nineteen.
We will have the case that was continued this evening, and I believe there will be at least one more case for the evening. So case assignments will... For ten-Z, the case heard and continued tonight, the assignment will stay with Commissioner Solovy, and we will have...